I have done
This is our regularly scheduled work session for May 2nd. It is 10 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. First item on our discussion items is the Move Mo contract street maintenance project. And this is Ryan.
Hi, I'm here to present the balance of the 2022 street maintenance, street improvement projects. Previously, we've seen and awarded the Slurry Seal Cape Seal contract. And here's the balance today for consideration to award a contract to Mountain Valley to do the balance of the more intense pavement maintenance, street rebuild portions of the projects. In your packets, similar to the previous conversations, we saw the overall maps. This map is the condensed version that has pointed out. Sorry, I have a couple larger versions if the packet is eight and a half by eleven if you'd like. So there are a couple exceptions from the first version. The two exceptions are the Bridges Drive and East Oak Grove between Bear Lakes and Bridges that have been eliminated due to budgets and price increases. As much as city crews did use some recent patching work that has certainly extended the life of those roadways, as traffic loading increases on Oak Grove and Bridges, certainly additional investment is recommended, but we'll defer those costs onto the 2023 project hopefully. The second deviation from the previous map version that you saw is the 300 block of South Second or South Third, excuse me, in front of CMU. As their campus plans have changed and additional concepts have come out, the original budgeted amount of $400,000 was not sufficient to cover all of the planned investments in that box. So those, that too has been removed from that initial map version that you saw. So what's left is the pavement overlays, pavement rebuilds, some sidewalk projects. And that balance would be awarded to Mountain Valley. The remaining, the bids came in a little higher than the available. Bids were 1.5, available was 1.43. The 1.5 does include a 10% owner's contingency as a relatively safe project with a lot of recent history with that contractor. We're recommending that we take out the 10% owner's contingency and award the remaining balance of the 2022 budget.
Yeah, how does this like, is this the overall budget second half for the year for street maintenance?
Correct, yeah, so a total
What was the original budget of that? I don't have
Sure, so the entire budget included three parts. But in total, it was 3.26 million that was budgeted this year for street maintenance. The first half that was previously awarded was that 1.4 that was awarded to A1 Chip Seal. And then less the 400,000 for the CMU. That puts us to that 1.43 that you see at the last page of the memo.
And if I can just add to that, that's only the contracted street maintenance. So contracted out to independent contractors. There's another sizable amount of money that we'd have to look in the budget for the exact dollar amount for preventative street maintenance, pothole mitigation, patching, all the things we do in-house is not included in that dollar amount.
Okay, just for my education, could you get me that dollar amount? And the reason why is because I'm reading this street report and maintenance, and it says that we need about five plus million dollars for streets. And we're, 3 million is way below that. And then it also talks about sidewalk repair. And for me driving around town, I'm seeing a lot of sidewalks, a lot of curb and gutter, a lot of streets that are in dire need of maintenance. And, you know, I just want to make sure as with my tenure that we either allocate more money or find some way to get those sidewalks and streets taken care of. Because that's, to be honest with you, that's been the biggest complaint I've been receiving from people and still receiving from people. And it's kind of, you know, you get tired of hearing that. So I say, well, I'll find out. And so that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to find out what's happening so that I have a good reason to sit there and say, well, this is why and not, well, I don't know, making you sound kind of dumb.
And I know you have the full budget document, but I'll pull out the street portion of it and email it over to you. And that'll show a lot of the in-house separated out by the supplies that they purchased and then the in-house labor. But just to clarify, that'll be on top of this 3.7 million that's the contracted out work that we don't have enough staff to do. And I would say that the number one thing all of us hear is about street maintenance. So we share that opinion as well. Each year we beefed it up trying to accommodate.
Well, that and sidewalks.
So last year, as we were getting ready for our budget pick of overview, Dave and I were talking, I think it was a phone call, and we were talking about like, hey, what do you think's important? And I kind of jokingly said, I don't think any of this matters if we don't spend more money on street repair because that's all we hear about. And he said, you know, you're right, we ought to come to that budget meeting and say, how much can we put towards street repair? So we did actually increase the amount in 20 that's being spent this year over previous years on street repair because of those exact concerns that all of council hears. And I think we've been told that there's the in-house work and that this 3.26 is about as much capacity as we can get people to submit RFPs to do. I mean, even if we wanted to spend 5 million
We don't have the kind of drug which to do it.
Right, so
Yeah, and one other aspect of that is right now because of the Townsend overlay, that all of our available crews have been working themselves very hard to get ahead of that drop dead day. So once that C dot project kicks off and we're actually ahead of it, then we'll be able to kind of rededicate some of our street crews back to some of these other projects. Because you're right, there's some streets that are pretty broken up.
You know, I'm looking at, I drive Sunnyside every day and it's, there's a lot of people in that sidewalk walking, older people, and I'm seeing humps and broken concrete. And as a matter of fact, there's still a section over there by that church that has an animal in it covered or something that doesn't have any concrete in it. I'm thinking safety issues. We don't want whoever becomes the new city attorney to be involved in any illegal action because somebody tripped over a broken sidewalk or something.
Luckily, that was just settled at that state Supreme Court in Boulder. So we're in good shape. We're going on that one, but I hear you.
So I did change my own comment.
I just wanted to comment that there's six and a half million budgeted in the capital improvement fund, and that's the general fund transfers, probably 3.2 million every year or thereabouts to the capital improvement fund. That's where we do our maintenance, our big maintenance of streets, our new streets, our sidewalk improvements and that type of stuff. So I think that's probably what you're seeing in the budget there is six and a half million. And so those are in different pots, if you will, within that fund. So what Ryan is talking about here is just strictly the Move Mo money that we have for the slurry seals. And I'm not a great streets person, but those types of things, the sidewalks are in a different pot in that same fund. Does that help? Okay, good.
So I have one question concerning that rebuild of South Third. I know we're still in the very formative stages of that. And I think that the drawing you provided in the work session packet is probably the most current of our conceptual drawings. That money is not included in this. Are we going to reintroduce that for 2023 budget?
I'll defer to bill on that.
Yeah, as part of our partnership with CMU to do campus improvements and expanding the downtown campus, we had talked about with council in the two or three-year plan to extend the campus to the north, finish out the original project, which would take us up to the intersection at least next year in 2023's budget. And so, and this year we had committed to CMU, if they do a lot of those renovations in the Cascade Hall building, on the restrooms and those types of things, we would help improve the parking and the safety of the, a lot of the people that go to the community forum have to walk over broken concrete and those types of things. So it was a public safety issue. So we budgeted this year several hundred thousand to do parking and just safety improvements in the sidewalks. But now CMU has a new facilities director. And so since he's started, we have met with the local CMU representatives, the CMU representatives from Grand Junction, our staff, and we've shared that with council recently. The bigger picture idea and most cost effective seems to be to do all of it in 2023. And so that's why we would pull this out this year. We would add that to money that CMU would be providing next year. And we'd do a city CMU campus improvement project, which would have a different type of entrance off of Third from Townsend and would have a nice parking area with some landscaping and really tie that south end of campus with Cascade Hall to the north side of campus and make it all feel like a connected campus. And at the same time in that bid, do the work to extend to the north and then we'd do it all at once. So that's why you're seeing it pulled out now and it's just to be a little more strategic in the way that we're doing it and partnering with CMU.
Excellent. I was talking to President Marshall in Grand Junction today, and he mentioned that they're very excited to be partnering with Montrose on that project, placing a lot of value. And that Montrose campus is no longer the poor stepchild, but now it's considered a vital part of C D's lights. And that's a great thing, a great partnership to have. Are there any other questions on that first item? If not, then we'll move on to our sales tax exemption of plastic bag fee. This is Assistant City Attorney Chris Bowles.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. What you have before you is a sales tax exemption for a carryout bag fee that's going to be implemented January 1 of 2023. What this does is it implements a 10 cent fee on all plastic and recycled paper bags that you get at the grocery store or any store for that matter. With the House bill that passed, polystyrene food containers, so styrofoam food containers, they're no longer going to be allowed to be used. That occurs in 2024. But with this, essentially, all we're doing is exempting this fee from our sales tax. It's a 10 cent fee, four cents of it goes to the owner of the business, six cents comes to the city for implementation and/or for recycling for the city. That's what these fees go to. Adding a sales tax fee on our six cents really isn't going to, it's going to be more of an administrative burden than it's worth. Additionally, the four cents going to the businesses is going to be already exempted from sales tax. So to parse out that six cents from the four cents of this small 10 cents really just administratively doesn't make sense. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
So for clarification for the public, that this was not something implemented locally?
Correct.
This was a state action that mandates that this occur in municipalities. We didn't decide to raise taxes on plastic bags. That's not something we did at all.
This is correct. So the state of Colorado implemented this. They are the ones that are, they've put the onus on the cities or municipalities or counties, wherever these businesses are located, and it's their fee. So the best thing that we can do, since at least my opinion, the best thing municipality can do is to really just implement it and not put an additional fee on anyone within their municipality by removing the sales tax on it.
And are smaller businesses able to opt out of this program?
Smaller businesses are exempted from this program so long as there are, the definition of a small store that fits this exemption is a store that operates solely in Colorado, has three or fewer locations in the state, and is not part of a franchise, corporation, or partnership that has physical locations outside of Colorado. So your small store, your mom and pop shops that only have a location here, they're going to be exempted from this so they don't have to charge that 10 cent fee to their consumers.
So the store is going to be ready to handle people bringing in their own bags?
I think that's kind of what the place is for a little bit.
Yeah, so the push is definitely to be using reusable, I mean, I'll just say canvas bags for sake of, sake of argument, just so we're not using all of the plastic. Plastics are actually going to be banned in 2024. Businesses will be able to use their inventory that they have on hand. However, they'll still be able to use the paper bags, which they will still have that 10 cent fee attached. But yes, the push is to have the consumer bring in their own bags where they can, you know, just reuse the same bags.
Do we have any feel for, I look back at when everybody was in the COVID section of our lives, the stores at one point would not bag your groceries if you brought your own bags in? You know, where we might stand on that situation?
At this point, no. There hasn't been any guidance from the state as to how to handle that situation. So that's really going to be, you know, who knows what's going to happen with COVID? Who knows if there's going to be a giant spike again? It's really up in the air at that point. One would hope that the city would then give guidance as to what a county or municipality should do in this, whether it be a moratorium on this fee or anything to that extent. It's up in the air, that's really
One of those things, you get your whole, live chickens home in a bag one minute and you go to the grocery store with that bag the next minute.
Agreed, agreed. So, you know, if you are bringing your bag to the grocery store, hopefully you wash it after you're carrying your chickens.
The reason we point that out is because I have I six and the exemption is livestock and hungry, so if you buy a cow, you can still put it in a plastic bag.
Correct, but one-time use. So, you know, yeah.
And the details also talk about any of your groceries that need to get bagged separately, like your wet head of lettuce or your bunch of tomatoes or your chicken breast. Those, all of those bags don't
Correct, those are exempted. Yes, yes, those bags will still, I mean, I can't speak for the grocery store, those bags will still be available at no cost to the consumer.
Now, it is my understanding that the way that the intent of the bill is that eventually in 2024, 2025, even those will be no longer available?
Not to my knowledge. The bill generally just goes to state that only the single-use plastic bags for purposes of the bag fee are going to be no longer available. And that is, I have the dates on here, the important dates. I believe June 1 is no longer, the plastic bags are no longer in use. Restaurants may still continue to use plastic bags. However, it's just the, the plastic bag you think of when you're bagging your grocery. Those bags that Barbara was speaking to, those will still be available as well as any, if you go to the pharmacy and they give you a little paper bag or a plastic bag there with your medications, it's generally in that paper bag. Those are exempted as well.
Where do they have plastic bags, Ron?
I can't speak to that.
Okay, are there any other questions for Chris on this?
I would say not only did we, this isn't our law, this is a state law. I think we actively as an organization lobbied against it because of the hassle.
Colorado municipality actively plays a role in this nation and as representatives of Montrose County, also in the Department of Public Affairs, in the mail. All right, if there are no other, all right, questions for Chris? We're going to move on to the proposed new planning commission public notice sign. That is Ann Morgan Thaler in my video. Hello, Ann.
Good morning, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, I am under the weather today, so I'm joining you remotely. Thank you for the opportunity to do that. I am here to give you an update on the planning commission public notice signs. And some background information is during a few public hearings that we had at the planning commission meeting last year, members of the public, planning commissioners and city council members expressed a desire to change our public notice signs so that they would be more visible and easier to read to members of the public who are passing by a property. We use these public notice signs when there's a public hearing at the planning commission for a parcel. And that hearing could be anything from a variance to a rezoning. And so there's multiple different land use actions that require a sign. And what we do currently is we use the sign that is included in your packet. And the staff brings the sign out, we tape a piece of paper on the sign that has information about the hearing, and then we set it out. And the sign is not great really because it's hard to read and it can kind of get lost in the mix of other things happening on the property. So Amy Sharp has been working, when she was here, she worked with Kaylee Reibenberg to explore different sign options and propose a new sign that's more visible. And I'm going to share my screen in order to show our current sign and some of our options. I believe you can see the screen now, but this is our current sign. And this is what we're proposing. I think you should be seeing the red planning commission sign now. It is bigger than our current sign. The font is a lot larger and we've tried to make it visible to people so that when they see the sign, they know that it's a City of Montrose land use or planning commission hearing sign. The idea behind these signs isn't necessarily that someone could look at a sign and get all the information that they need about a public hearing when they look at the sign. But really, the goal is for it to be noticeable for someone driving by or walking by to be able to look at it and know where to go for more information. And so we think that this sign does that. We're also proposing that it would be double-sided. Our signs right now are single-sided. And so with a double-sided sign, we'd really be able to use it like a real estate sign so that it'd be placed perpendicular to the property so people driving by will see it facing them as opposed to right now our one-sided sign, we place it parallel to the property line. So it's really hard as you're driving by to take a peek at it. This will also be joined with some improvements on our website so that once people get to our city website, they're able to see the list of all of our active applications and a map of where they are. So they'll easily be able to find information about a sign that they, that they saw. We also like this, it's a little bit bigger, but we like the size because it still is able to be set up by our staff and it fits in a city vehicle. There are some other signs that are possibilities that are huge, but you do have to hire contractors for those or use a special truck or city vehicle to put them up. One thing, Mayor Frank, I showed this to him and he mentioned perhaps increasing the font for date and time, and you can certainly do that in order for people to more clearly see that information. And then I thought I'd just roll through a couple other sign options to let you know that we did look at other options. And we are looking for your feedback here before we implement this new sign. This is Montrose County sign that they're currently using and
We're not seeing any of that, Ann.
Sorry?
We're still on this current city sign.
Oh.
We haven't seen any of the others.
Well, I don't really know here, sorry about that. I'm going to try and share again here, sorry about that, everyone. So you should be seeing me right now, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that comes to my mind, we had a couple guys at one of the meetings that were really wishing us to change the signage. Have we done anything to let maybe send a note back to them, maybe with your suggestion and we're making the change?
That's great. I think it's, yeah, I think it's great that this was in some ways really citizen-driven. We probably all recognized it could be improved, but the citizen saying it out loud, I think made a difference.
And it did. One of the things that we noted that during one of our processes, that the sign was out on a road I drive on three times a day, I was aware of it and I never saw it. So that helped the conversation knowing that citizens aren't able to read the sign. We need to agree to do something. It worries me you're out driving, you can't see.
So Ann, now we can see that third slide that you're on with a blue sign?
Great, thanks, sorry about that. And I think you're seeing it not in presentation mode, but at least you're seeing it. So now you should be seeing the red and orange sign that we're proposing to use.
Yeah, and that's in the packet, so that's helpful.
It's in the packet. And as I was mentioning, there are adjustments that can be made. And just, you know, one more time is that the goal is for someone to, like you all were saying, be able to see the sign and know there is a public hearing coming on this property and understand where to go for more information. It's not feasible to put all of the information about a public hearing on a sign in a way that's legible. But through having a visible sign, providing more information clearly on our website and some public information about what it means when you see one of these signs, we think we can do a much better job. This is the Montrose County sign. It's about the same size as what we're proposing. They include a map. I think sometimes they might even put the plat of the project on the sign and then a symbol for what type of application it is. We took kind of a similar approach in that we're trying to make it really visible, but we're also trying to limit the amount of information on there to make what we do include very visible, but a similar type of approach. Here's an example of a really big sign that some municipalities use. It's a benefit of it being really huge, but it can get in the way of the sidewalk. Not every property is conducive to this kind of sign and it would require us to have a, you know, use one of our city trucks or hire someone. You can see this is property of Mike Signs. Usually there's a sign company that comes out and puts something up for a municipality if they use something like this. Here's another example of a really big sign, visible, but again, a challenge when you have different kinds of properties, whether you use a stand or you need to put it in the window of a property. And we're proposing for our signs, we'd have a real estate stand or some that are not mounted on real estate stands, so we could put them in a window when needed. Right now, you're looking at another just general sign to show you that we're not far off from what others are doing. Ours does right now include a QR code. We're seeing that more signs are going that way. It's just another way for someone who's walking by to grab information and we can try to help provide information about how to use a QR code, but it's not the only way to get there. And then just one more for another sign that's kind of similar.
Ann, my only comment on the design would be that the location, it's obvious to us that that's the hearing location and not the property and questions location, but that might not always be clear. So I wonder if that, if there's room for that to say hearing location?
Yes, that's a great comment, thank you.
Like Ann mentioned on this sign, we talked about having the date and time of the hearing larger than the other font so that people can actually, as they drive by, have some idea of the date and time of the hearing.
I assume we get these printed as kind of blank signs and then
I assume we get these printed as kind of blank signs and then fill that in with a big Sharpie as needed?
Yes, that's the plan, and that we would, we're investigating ways that you can put clear plastic magnetically over the entire sign, like some of our standard board signs that we use, so they'd be more weather resistant. Right now, when we tape the paper on, they, it's usually okay, but they can get eroded by wind and rain, so that's what we'd be able to use.
I'm thinking about ordering five of these signs, two to be put into store windows and three to be placed around, so they would be reusable?
They are reusable, yes. And with the level of activity that we have for applications, that's what we were thinking right now, is three of, I think, three of the real estate style and two that would go in windows. We may need to purchase some more. Sometimes we have more applications than that, so we'll order more if we need to.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ann? Excellent, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, general city council discussion.
Well, I just want to thank the staff and Barbara here for clarifying the plastic bag situation. I thought I had it all down, but now I know there's more exemptions than there are just getting rid of plastic bags. More confused, but what the heck.
We all are.
Learning. Thank you.
Nothing from me.
All right, staff comments. Everybody's smiling and going like this, so I'll say, thank everybody, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Lunch should be here shortly. Dave and I watched it being delivered.
Yeah, our like-
And then we'll-
First salad and cheese.